Now we'll have time for our Committee of the Whole meeting, and so we're in session. The first item is responsible contracting with the district policy. Mr. Palito?
Yes, as we discussed last week, on the agenda tonight is a recommendation to waive the subcontractors from the responsible contractor requirements for the Collegiate Academy project only. That was based on our discussion last week. We want to do that to help keep this project moving forward. We've been given some concerns by the general contractors that if we don't do something with the subcontractors that we will have trouble getting a complete bid package for that project. So the decision was to just waive it for this project at this time and then look to the policy committee to come up with a more permanent solution in the near future.
That fits with what I recall happened at the Committee of the Whole, and at that meeting, I know I along with several other board members expressed a desire to be reasonable and accommodate all sides of the question and not be guilty of sticking to one strong position, and if in doing so it would hurt the district's financial position. So I recall the solicitor took the temperature of the room. We couldn't take a binding vote, and we had, I think, two board members absent at that point. And he was to draw up a couple of, be prepared with a couple of resolutions, which I'm aware that he has done. So at this point, we're open for a discussion if anybody wants to discuss the subject. There is one item on the agenda under supplemental new business, and it has been separated, which means when the time comes in the meeting, we'll have already dealt with the new business and could then discuss that resolution again at that time. So now's the time for questions and comments and concerns, and then...
Mr. President?
Mr. Walker, I'm sorry.
Attached to the meeting agenda for the Committee of the Whole that is before you tonight is a memo that does contain three different options that we've prepared based on the conversations that we've had with the board. The first option is the option that is currently residing, I believe, under item 8.01, which is a full removal of the requirement for the subcontractors to file subcontractor responsibility certifications. The other two options are options that we are prepared to place on the final agenda for this evening should the board give us an indication to go one way or the other during this Committee of the Whole. The second option that we have in reserve is the one which would require a contractor to submit a letter in writing to the administration, to the school district, explaining why they're unable to obtain a subcontractor certification for individual subcontractors. So if they could get a certification on a, say, a painting subcontractor, but they couldn't get one on a glazer, they would submit the certification for the painting subcontractor and then submit a letter for the glazer explaining why. The third option that has been provided simply removes the apprenticeship program requirement from the subcontractor certification, which would still require subcontractors to submit certifications stating that they meet all the other requirements of the Responsible Contractor Regulation, which is at 610.1 of the school board policy. However, they would not have to comply with the requirement that they have a Class A apprenticeship program, of which they have graduated people for at least three out of the last five years. That particular requirement would be removed. So those were the three options that we prepared for you for review and discussion today.
To clarify, that first option would be only for the academy project, not...
I'm sorry, Mr. President, you're absolutely correct. As a matter of fact, each of the options, all three of them, are only for the project at the Northwest Pennsylvania Collegiate Academy.
Okay.
So this is a project-specific waiver. This is not an amendment to the policy.
Well, wherever this discussion leads us, that option one is, as I understand it, the one that is in place under the separated items?
That is correct.
Okay.
And if there was a desire by the board to change to one of the other options, we have the ability to switch that.
But that was the one that seemed to have the most backing the night we met.
Correct.
And therefore, that's why it's there. Okay, discussion, Mr. Spiegel?
And I wasn't here. I was one of those two that were here at the time, but I would be in favor of option one. I know, looking into it previously, that there's a lot more to the responsible contracting than just the apprentice program, as long as they have the correct insurances and the experience and so forth. I feel very comfortable with option number one because we don't want to lengthen the process. And even going through and getting letters of explaining why they can't get subcontracting, that takes whoever the bidders are, whoever the contractors are, time to do that. We just want this to go, go forward before it gets too late. I don't know the details, but I suspect that's the intent, so I would be absolutely in favor of option one.
Would everyone please silence their telephone and electronic devices for the remainder of the evening? Thank you. Any other discussion, comments, questions?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
If we waive the responsibility certifications, the subcontractors are still required to provide performance bonds, are they not?
I'm sorry, Mr. Nichols, I couldn't hear you. If you could hit the button on your microphone.
If we waive these certifications, these subcontractors are still required to provide performance bonds, isn't that correct?
Yes. Yeah, the performance bond comes with the actual bid packet that we receive from the general contractors.
I would favor as well this option one because it would be a clean bid. I think option two is confusing. You're submitting a written explanation. Who is going to judge whether that's adequate or not? We're trying to get more bidders. I think that just continues the problem we have now that our system is too confusing. There's only two school districts in the state that do this. This is costing our taxpayers money. I think we need to correct this.
Any other discussion, comments, questions, concerns?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Feeny?
So I did spend some time, as I promised the board. I met with Ken Sherwin from EE Austin along with Mr. Brockman, and Mr. Titus had expressed interest in when I mentioned to the board that I was going to do this. So I invited him as well. I had a very good, I think we had a very good conversation with Mr. Sherwin. Originally, when he wrote us the letter, he is the contractor that had asked for us to consider option two, which was that we would, they would be able to submit an explanation as to why they cannot follow the Responsible Contractor Certification requirement for certain labors or certain workforces. He also, we also had a conversation where we talked about the possibility that, you know, everything else within your responsible contracting policy is good, and that one of the issues was the apprenticeship program. So we also had that discussion. And then I actually met with the steam fitters unions, I met with the plumbing unions, and I met with the electrical unions, I believe. And when I talked to them about the letters that had been submitted to us by the contractors, they questioned the fact that it would be reasonable to ask them, these companies, to submit that information, the certifications, after the bid. But I had been told when I asked that question, because one of the Hudson had said, "While identifying subcontractors is a legitimate request, in our opinion, this would be far more beneficial if received after the bid," so that we are able to provide the more aggressive bid to the district but not have to deal with the completing of forms that will hamper our ability to provide the most economical bid. But I know we had had a discussion, and Ken had backed that up, Mr. Sherwin had backed that up, that, you know, he wants to have those, he wants to have that information from the subcontractors ahead of time so he can give the most accurate bid, you know, and that he's not going to be losing anything if a subcontract suddenly says, "Oh, I'm sorry, I can't do it for that price that I quoted you," and then they're out. So within all my conversations, I was leaning towards the possibility of option three. But then I had to lead with my conscience, and I had to lead with my heart, and I had to lead with my gut. And some of the contractors that were mentioned as subcontractors for the academy project concern me, and that's because I have a house in Erie, a brick house, an old house, began built in 1925, and you're all welcome to come over and look, and when they ran out of brick. And I have two different types of brick on my house, and it's an interesting, it's an interesting house, and it has its challenges. And we've had issues with some of the contractors that could potentially be working on Academy High. And Academy High is an architectural gem, and it's the keystone of our city, and I think it's extremely important that the work that's done on that project is the best possible labor that we can get. And I know we are in a financial crunch. I understand that. The other thing that we need to, so two other things I want us to consider, I'll stay with that. With the apprenticeship program, so we have apprentices that are working on that, they're not getting the same wage. They are getting an apprenticeship wage, which is less, and because they're taking less of a wage, then their education for them is free through their apprenticeship program. So they're going to be working alongside journeymen that are going to be, when they come across these issues of this complicated building, they're going to be learning, and that's what we are in. We're in the field of education. And because I've had issues with my own house with not being able to find responsible contractors, and I've had work that's been done and then had to be redone because it was done wrong the first time, I think it's beneficial that we, for academy, especially for Collegiate Academy, that these apprentices are able to have this opportunity to learn as much as they possibly can. It's a complicated building, and I looked at the architecture drawings again today and the specs, and it's extremely complicated. It's a challenge, is what you said. So I'm leaning towards option two because of that, that I think this is valuable for our students. And of course, I've forgotten the third point, so with the President's permission, someone else can speak, and if I'm allowed to speak a second time on this, I would appreciate it.
This is the Committee of the Whole meeting, so the rules are a little different, so there's no pressure.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to question or press a concern?
Yes, I would like to add some information. Just so everybody is aware where we are on this, we had six bids for the general contract. They varied from $438,000 to $780,000. The low bid was EE Austin, who built the Veterans Stadium back in the 20s. It's got to be a rare general contractor that's been in business for 100 years. So the low bid is highly qualified. But this is a challenge of a job. This is not a clean sheet of paper. Contractors would much prefer to be putting up a new building for St. Vincent's or Erie Insurance than digging into a 100-year-old building like Academy. We already have a danger signal on the electrical contract. We had only one bid for that. Newco Electric came in at $308,000. We don't know what the range would be, but that is unacceptable to get so few bids. This is a $10 million undertaking. We are moving on in a few months to Erie High. That'll be 30 million. It's a huge amount of money we are spending. One of the contractors said, "It's going to cost you 2% to 4% more the way you bid this." Well, on $60 million, that's a $1,200,000 to $2,400,000. That's a waste of taxpayer money. I think the contractors and the labor unions are benefiting that the additional money that the state is providing this district is being used to rehabilitate the buildings. They're going to get the immediate benefit of participating in all this work that's going to occur this year. I think this apprenticeship requirement or all this hocus-pocus on requirements for bidding are overreaching, that they should be eliminated. We need more bidders.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. President? I just want to point out that the company Hudson's that had said that our bid would be anywhere from 2% to 4% on a given project higher are the company that asked if they could submit the paperwork after the fact, so that they, and they said that identifying subcontractors is a legitimate request in their opinion. So even though they're saying that the cost could be 2% to 4% higher, they're also saying that parts of our policy are beneficial.
Mr. President?
Mr. Superintendent?
I'd just like to remind the board that the reason why we didn't submit the subcontractor packets or the main packets after the bids were issued is because of the, what would happen if they submit those and do not qualify as a responsible contractor, and what that would do to the project. We had a similar issue this summer with the subcontractor Danelko, who did say that they were qualified, and we found out afterwards that they were not.
Thank you.
Mr. Spiegel?
I think probably the largest onus would probably be on Mr. Brockman there to make sure that whoever we choose has responsible managers more than anything else, whether it's EE Austin, whomever. I really don't try to pay attention to those details because I feel I don't need to get into that. It's the company. We'll say first is my business. We do not have an apprentice program, but our bakers, some of you guys have been baking for 30 years. For anybody to tell me that because our bakers didn't go through an apprentice program and they're not as good as an apprentice who's been around for three or four years, I would say that I value the apprentice program, and I value the education that they receive. But just because you're not an apprentice or you've been through an apprentice program doesn't mean that you're still not skilled in your craft. So we have to make, in my mind, it is more important to have a sound management team in place than the training program for the individuals that's actually going to be putting the mortar between the bricks. Because there's a lot of people that can put mortar between bricks that have not been through apprentice programs, that have been doing this for years and are experienced. So I don't think that's the test that we have to go by. I think the largest challenge, I would say, for Neil to make sure that we have a responsible management program more than anything else. So that's my take on that.
I know Mr. Spiegel understands most of, all of the ramifications of this, but he was not present when Mr. Brockman expressed the original concerns of the district. Have you two spoken since, or do you need to now? Neil, tell him anything that he might not already know?
We only compared barbers. I think that was the only thing we've ever talked about.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes?
So just as the conversation's been going on, I have a couple of things just to add. The first is to Mr. Spiegel's point about having appropriate managers. With each and every single one of the contracts that has been awarded by the board, those contractors are required to submit their superintendent's resumes to me. So whoever is in charge of that project from that company, their, the resume for that individual has to come to my desk, and I have to actually approve of the superintendent who's going to be working on the job. So if there is something that is on the resume that is kind of questionable or just something doesn't really smell right, I can deny the manager from that company from actually being the superintendent of the project. That's the first thing. The second thing is to give a little peace of mind to Mrs. Feeny as far as the quality of work that we will get out of the project, and I'm going to put it to you that way. The traditional typical AIA contract that a school district signs with any contractor has a section on the completion of work, and in that section it outlines that the owner and the architect needs to be fully satisfied with the quality of the work. And if at any point we are not satisfied with the quality of the work, the contractor needs to fix it at their own expense. I spent many hours, myself and Mr. Zemcheck, walking around Wilson Middle School this summer, making sure that the masonry restoration that was performed was done to the standard that we wanted. And we made those masons come back, and we made them wash down the grout and change it out and change the coloring. So there are things in the contracts as well as my supervision of the superintendents, and if we do get a clerk of the works for this project, the clerk of the works would be there to ensure that the work that is done is quality work and it's not done to a low standard.
Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. President, I just want to follow up on what Mr. Brockman said, and it's a point that the architects did make for us, is that we do not have direct contracts with our subcontractors. That is done through the prime contractor, and each and every one of our prime contractors will be a qualified contractor under our Responsible Contractor Policy. So it's their responsibility, not ours, to ensure that the work that is done by the subcontractors that they choose is up to our quality level.
Mr. President? Yeah, Mr. Zagli?
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to address this issue. I think the reason, actually, that we're even at this point is the fact that this was advanced as part of the Financial Improvement Plan, that I would remind the board, has been approved and is really the governing plan for the district going forward, and as you're in financial watch status. You know, I've been, I've been in and around politics probably too long. It's about 35 years now, and I've worked in policy most of my adult life in this venue. And we're going to, you know, we're going to talk in a few months about custodial outsourcing and custodial supervision, and I know that that's going to be a contentious debate. And people of goodwill can come down in different places on that. And there's legitimate points of view, perspectives on both sides. I think, for me at least, though, this Responsible Contractor Policy is a little bit of a different class, what I would call more of sort of a black and white issue, right? Because really what you have on one side is the district taxpayers, district students and personnel, and those impacted by the policy, which are outside interests, right? Unions, companies that are seeking the work that you are putting forward, not only in this first phase. And I'm, I know the discussion here is more on this waiver for collegiate, but I think it goes, as the board has talked about before, it goes to the broader policy itself. And, you know, we can, you know, we can make intellectual arguments all day long, and I could stay here for hours and we can have a debate. There's nothing I love more than a good policy debate. But really, when you peel it all back, all the intellectual window dressing and arguments, really, it really comes down, this comes down to an exercise, in my view, of just simply raw politics, right? Whose side are you on? I think this board knows well, it's, you know, its fiduciary responsibility is to the taxpayers that elected you. It's to the students who attend this district. It's to the men and women who are the personnel, the teachers that make this district operate. On the other side is union business interests, right? They're outside of this district, and quite honestly, frankly speaking, they are outside of your fiduciary responsibility as a board, every single one of you. You're not here to represent their businesses, whether you're for or against this policy. That is not what this role is about. You also have, I think that's obvious, is you have a legal obligation. Whether you like it or not, this district received $14 million in ongoing aid from the General Assembly, and part of it, as painful as it may be for folks, is part of it, you got me, and you got a Financial Improvement Plan, and under the law, and you are an instrumentality of the state. You're not your own, we're very big on local control, and we have a strong local control tradition in the state. I get all that. I was Secretary of Education for a couple of years, been in this business a long time. But you are an instrumentality of the state, and your powers are only what the state gives you, nothing more, nothing less. And as far as I'm concerned, this district is governed by that Financial Improvement Plan, and the plan that I put forward calls for the repeal, at least of this apprenticeship piece, of this responsible contractor. Nobody's arguing about the performance bond, all the other requirements that come with this. They are part and parcel of any good contracting that any responsible government entity would do. We're not arguing about any of that. We're arguing about one aspect of this policy, responsible contractor. And we're not even, in this venue, we're not even talking about the policy advanced and put forward by the Financial Improvement Plan that governs your actions. We're talking about a compromise proposal that would apply only to subcontractors. And what is this Responsible Contractor Policy? Let's call it for what it is. It is a total fiction. It has no basis in law. It's made up by and for union interests. That's exactly what it is. The people who wrote it are smart people, because what it does, it guarantees them the playing field with no competition. And it says you can only, the only people that have these are union outfits, union shops, and it basically, the prevailing wage, all the rest of the stuff, that isn't good enough for them. They need the guarantee that they and only they get the work, right? And really, when you peel that back, really what it is, it's about greed. It's about the greed of these people to get this business for them and only them. And again, you can hide behind all the intellectual poses, arguments you want. You're never going to convince me otherwise. That's exactly what it is. It's greed. And we had, we used to have a saying at the budget table, "Pigs get slaughtered." And that's what this is all about. There's a lot of money on the street for this business, and to say that one group and only one group is entitled to that, I just find that wrong. And, you know, it would be different, too, if this apprenticeship requirement was somehow the lodestar of quality. If we knew for a certainty you had an apprenticeship program, you were guaranteed good work. But we know that's not the case. We know absolutely, sitting here, that is not the case. I'm not, I'm not saying anything bad about apprenticeship programs. I'm sure there's many very good programs out there. And as I've talked about in the past, you know, it all, it all has to do with fidelity, fidelity of execution, fidelity of delivery. You all have been in and around education. As teachers, you take professional development, and you know that some of it is very good, but you also know that some of it is garbage, right? And just because it's labeled professional development doesn't mean it's quality, no more than a certification means effectiveness for a teacher, right? We all get that. So let's not hide behind these intellectual arguments, right? Oh, that it's somehow, you know, connected to education or the kids here. That's just not the case. And again, you're never going to sell me on that. And the notion, too, that this district, the only one of two in the entire state, 500 school districts, right? And only two districts in the entire state have this policy. Erie is one of a half a dozen school districts that are in some phase of financial distress. So the same district that was part of driving itself into the ground that you needed state aid, and again, none of this is personal, right? I like you all, as men and women, I'm here, and I would say, the superintendent, others, I've spent every day since I've been here trying to advance and improve the interests of this district. That's why I'm here. And it's been a great experience, save for maybe this piece. But nobody's going to sell me on the idea that 498 other districts are wrong, but this district and I think the Colonial School, you're the only two that got it right, right? You're on the leading edge. I just, I don't buy that. And there's nothing that I've done, quite honestly, in my plan that you all couldn't have done without me. And so, you know, you wonder, why wasn't it done? And I think it's clearly the case that it's politics, nothing more, nothing less. And again, people can strike the pose, but it just, you're not going to sell me on that point. And while we know apprenticeship isn't a guarantee, there are things that we do know. We know that it's anti-competitive. We know it results in fewer bidders. And we know that for a financially distressed school district that is still climbing out a financial hole, we know that it means your facility dollars, precious facility dollars, we're talking about an $81 million plan, you have over $200 million in needs. So you're at best going to touch about a third of what you ought to be doing, right? So each of these dollars is precious. And yet, and yet, everybody seems comfortable, well, that our money's not going to go that far, doesn't seem to be a problem. I can't believe that if this was your own house, right, that you all would require apprenticeship... That you all would require apprenticeship programs for work at your own home, right? But that it's other people's money seems okay. Uh, just, you know, look at, uh, look at the bids. This is the most recent one, seven, uh, or, uh, January seventh to twenty twenty. You've put out to date, uh, thirty-three projects for bid. On ten of those projects, you've received one bid. Thirty percent of your total, you've received a single bid. How in God's name does that advance the, the interests of the taxpayers of this city who are supporting this school district? In twelve cases, you received only two bids. Now, I'd, I'd love more bids, right? But in sixty-seven percent, fully two-thirds of the projects that you've advanced, you've gotten one or two bids. Now, nobody's gonna, nobody can, is gonna convince me that a policy that says only a certain group can bid is somehow not deleterious to getting and receiving more bids, having more competition. Just not the case. We also know too, by the way, that this policy has denied people in this city, companies in this city, the business. Your business is going out of town to out, out of county, out of city companies because of this policy. And if there was ever a county, a city that needed business, to keep the business in its own community, it's definitely one of the poorest in the state. But everybody seems comfortable, oh, send it to Pittsburgh, send it here, send it there, right? As if, well, it's because our friends, I guess, are being taken care of. Um, you've been told by your own administrative team, the negative effects of the policy. They've been repeated time again. You've been told by your architect, who you hire and place confidence and trust in to get this work done. You've told them, they've told you that this is, this is a bad policy and it's hurting your interests. You've had businesses, businesses in this community that have written to you, quality businesses, ones that have been in business for a hundred years, they're writing and saying they can't bid on your work. They're taxpayers. And I think lastly, and I'll end with this, it's really to me, it's, it's at its core in no disrespect, right? But it's the hypocrisy here that really just galls me. The, you've got businesses that are part of this community that pay taxes here, they employ men and women in this city that pay taxes here, they send the kids, their kids to your schools. And what do you tell them when it comes to work that you're letting? What do you say with them? Go pound sand, right? I hear a lot and I've been here nearly two years now, I hear a lot about community and how we're all one and we're all together. Really, but when push comes to shove and the chips are down, it's really like, yeah, we're with you if you're one of our favored constituencies, right? You're one of our union friends, you're aligned with them, well, then we're, we're good with you. But if you're not, too bad. And when you raise taxes, you didn't just raise it on the companies that had apprenticeship programs, did you? You didn't raise taxes just on the people that are in apprenticeship programs. And again, I have nothing against these programs, but that's not why I'm here and it's not why you're here. You're here for the taxpayers, you're here for the kids, you're here for the people in, uh, that, in this district. That's your resp-, your fiduciary responsibility. It isn't to these unions, it isn't to these businesses, to these companies. You ought to be using it so that you get the most for the people here. Instead, what we're doing, if, if this policy stays in place, we're saying, well, we're taking care of our friends. And I'm sorry, I've, I've, I've sat here, I've been very respectful in the two years. Again, I, I appreciate and recognize the time that each of you, uh, put in here. Um, it is really, truly a labor of love. I get all that. And it's no disrespect to any of you personally. This is purely business. And the way that I see it, sitting here with a distressed school district, you ought to be doing everything you can to see that every dollar that you have at your disposal is maximized to its highest efficiency possible. And having a policy in place that shoots yourselves in the foot, that just tells a group of businesses, your bids aren't wanted, I just think that's, that's wrong and it's unconscionable. And if this dis-, if this board cannot see its way fit to find a, a, a space i- in a compromised way that you can, you can address some of these issues, I, I just really think that folks ought to look in the mirror as to why you're on this board. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, Mrs. Zogby.
Mr. President?
Ms. Sherman?
Oh, go ahead. No, I wasn't.
Oh, I thought, I'm, that was my mistake.
That's okay.
My defective ears.
That's okay. I guess I just, again, I wa-, you have me wrong, Mr. Zogby. I'm certainly not a political individual. I'm in this for the students, I'm in this for my community, which I have lived in this city my entire life. Um, I think of my parents right now, who graduated from academy, um, a school they loved dearly, they know they want the work done right. I believe that, again, I'm, I'm voting with my heart, I'm voting with my conscience, I'm voting with my gut. And I think in my years of teaching, people that have worked with me had said, yeah, she's got a good gut. My years of coaching, the people that have played for me and have competed against me had said, the woman's got a good gut. So I'm going back to this responsible contracting policy that was written in two thousand twelve. It was written by Don Wright. It was at a time when McKissick had just come in and done a plan for the school district where we were gonna be doing a lot of construction, hopefully. Unfortunately, we didn't have any money and so that construction didn't happen. But the second paragraph, it, it speaks loudly to me and it says, "Further, due to the critical impact that skilled construction, craft labor has on public works, um, projects." And by the way, you know, there's, there's a lot of, uh, government money that's gone into, you know, public labor agreements. So those are much harder from a contractor's point of view to, to bid on. This is not a, a public, uh, labor agreement, this is a responsible contracting agreement. Construction, craft labor, and intimate craft labor, skill shortages. It is necessary to require contractors and subcontractors to participate in established formal apprenticeship training programs as a condition of bidding for the purpose of both promoting successful project delivery and ensuring future workforce development. I just went to an SAS conference that was, um, hosted by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. The SAS Institute, Bridging the Skills Gap, A Pathway to Employability. One of the keynote speakers was Richard E. Stupp. He was an agriculture workforce specialist from Cornell University. He spoke about the importance right now in our country of having skilled labor. Every time I talk to business, um, owners in the community, they say, we are having a, a very difficult time finding skilled labors. So this is a passion of mine and you can call it politics, but I'm not political. I mean, I may be on this school board, but I'm not on this school board because I wanted to be a political person. I want us to go back and relook at this policy and I think we probably should have done it before. I do think we need to rewrite this policy. I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you there. It, there are parts of this policy that are constricting, but for right now, I want us to go back to the policy committee with this. We've had people come and talk to us about community benefit agreements. Sumner, you're absolutely right, at our committee of whole last time, you said, when it came to our minority hiring, it's a bunch of paper shuffling and that there's no accountability there. And I agree with you a hundred percent. So let's, let's put some teeth into policy for that too. Um, so all I'm asking right now is, I wanna be safe. And for me, safe is option two. I, I'm willing to consider option three, but I wanna do it in committee and I wanna bring everybody back to the table who helped write this policy and I want us to get it right. So we don't have to come back and vote on this again, 'cause we've already voted on this twice now. And now we're going at it for a third time. So, um, again, I'm, I am not disagreeable to us going back and looking at this. And Neil knows that, 'cause I met with him about it and actually contacted the solicitor about the possibility of the option three, which was to remove the apprenticeship program from this policy. So I'm not saying that I'm against doing any of that. I'm just saying that for this collegiate project that's happening right now, that we have to put the bids out for, the only thing I'm comfortable with right now is option two. Um, the other thing I want to mention to you is that, you know, I've taught in this district for a long period of time. So I remember when I was working at Pfeiffer Burley and the atrium was leaking. And so we brought in the roofers to, to fix the leak in the atrium. Well, they fixed the leak in the atrium, but then I'm, I'm teaching in a third grade classroom at Pfeiffer Burley and, and a room that never leaked before and all of a sudden the ceiling came down, you know? So I have experience in the district where the, the, the work has not been up to par and we don't have a clerk of works right now. And I know we're working really hard on getting that, but because we don't have it right now, I, I'm just, I'm concerned for the taxpayers and the money. And the other thing is, we've been talking about this a lot. A lot of times, it comes down to the architect's drawings and the, uh, the change orders that cause us the added costs. So I already been, I already heard from somebody that, uh, in insulation, that's saying that, uh, that, that that might be overkill over there, what, what our plan is right now. So I, can you address that?
Actually, I can. The zoning board has a requirement on the amount of insulation for schools.
Okay.
We actually had to get a variance because it's supposed to have an R thirty. And if you look at the picture, I, I have a picture of where the ins-, what the insulation's gonna be. We, i- in all reality, it shouldn't pass, but because of the nature of the way that the roof is structured, we were granted a variance on that actual zoning restriction.
Okay. Thank you. And again, I have a great deal of faith in Neil and I did spend, uh, quite a bit of time talking to him and Ken Sherwin, um, from EEA Austin. So again, it's not that I am, um, completely against, um, rewriting this policy. We've gotta go back and visit it. But for this particular project right now, since we don't have anything other, anything else in place, I really think we should be looking at our other two options and not waiving everything, 'cause we don't have a clerk of works yet. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. S-, Mr. Nichols?
Darlene, you're going back to two thousand twelve and the grandiose plan, they had to redo the schools and they had no money.
Right.
They had no money to do that, nothing was done. Now, we have received fourteen million in aid from the state and part of the requirement was to follow a financial plan. You wanna vary from it. One of the requirements of that financial plan is to open up our bidding. There are two districts out of five hundred in this state that have restrictions such as this. And I am pro-union, but I don't like to hear, as you have repeatedly said, that only union labor is skilled. There are many non-union contractors, most of your housing, for example, is non-union. There are skilled workers there. I think it's an insult, the view you take, that it has to be a union worker to be skilled. I favor number one, which is on this one project, uh, waiving these requirements to simplify our bidding and hopefully we'll get more bidders than the one bidder we received on the electrical contract. I don't wanna see us, on this ten million dollar contract, throw away two hundred to four hundred thousand dollars. Some of you may wanna do that, I don't.
We've got ten minutes before the, uh, regular board meeting will begin on time. This discussion is and has been helpful, but I'll remind everyone, we had a policy in place and two weeks ago, the administration brought a concern to us that this might be a problem going forward, starting with the academy job. And so we had somewhat of a discussion that night and arrived with the solicitors overseeing us at three, um, options to consider to deal with getting us through the first phase of that construction, that being the academy project. So as he pointed out, all three of these respond only to that situation. It was said and agreed and understood at that meeting that, uh, the consent of the board seemed to be almost unanimously that we would revisit that policy, that the policy review committee would meet. And I recall, uh, Mrs. Feeney and Mr. Nichols expressed an interest in being on that. So that will happen, uh, regardless, or aside from what we do tonight with any of these three options. We will not take the vote on this in the next ten minutes. We will take it during the regular meeting when it comes to this isolated, separated item after the rest of the new business. So we don't have to bring it into focus then and we are gonna neglect to include Mrs. Hbersky's student handbook review at this point because of time concerns. But I'm gonna suggest that the superintendent either could include that in his report during the regular meeting, calling you to do that, or we could reschedule that for another time.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think Mrs. Hbersky will be very brief in her comments regarding that, so we could...
Well, I don't wanna cut this off if there's no more, if there's something more to be said, but there will be an opportunity to bring the responsible contracting question into focus and vote on it and decide it, uh, at the point of the supplemental new business and the separated item. If everyone's okay with that and, and we wanna let that happen and Mrs. Hbersky can take the next step for this committee of the whole meeting, that would be...
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Yeah, yes.
I wasn't here last meeting, but I've, um, obviously been up to date on how Mr. Zogby feel and just this whole situation in general. Um, and obviously, I, I have alve-, I have always supported the union and things like that, but I will agree with Mr. Nichols to an extent of, um, coming from the perspective of some of the people that approach me and I'm sure approach others on this board, um, with not being able to bid on some of these projects because of the requirements, including minority, um, business owners who, who have construction businesses or, uh, these type of businesses that'll be, that might wanna bid on these projects, but they don't have a apprenticeship, uh, program attached to, um, their business. So I, I was, um, under the, if, I was thinking that we had a little bit more time before we actually took a vote on this. I didn't know we were gonna actually vote on this today, but, um, you know, it is something that I feel like we should look at the policy, um, and have some type of review, you know, of the policy before we start making decisions. Um, I don't know if that's possible, you know, because it's on the agenda. I don't know, somebody maybe can explain that, um, better to me, but I do, I agree with, I do agree with Sumner to that extent of, I do support unions, but I do feel like we are limiting, we are excluding, um, including minority business owners as well. So I do have some concerns and I would like to look at that policy a little bit further before making some type of vote. So I guess, I don't know if...
As I said, I'm not sure if you just came in, but I just said that we reviewed this because the administration had a concern that was showing, uh, becoming revealed because of the academy project.
Right.
And that's how we got to discussing just the academy project, but it was almost unanimous in the room that we, we should review and that means administration and solicitor too, that we should review the policy. So whatever we vote to do tonight on this, whatever the option, we are going to do that. We're gonna have that policy committee meet and do its work to review the policy. So, uh, that will happen regard, aside from and in addition to whatever vote is taken tonight.
Mr. President?
Mr. Superintendent?
Just to clarify why, uh, we were asking for this, uh, tonight, is we have the bid opening for the collegiate project scheduled for January thirtieth. Uh, so, uh, these concerns were brought to us by the, uh, many of the prime contractors that were looking to bid and the concern specifically was around the subcontractors and the fact that many of those industries do not have a, uh, any type of apprenticeship program whatsoever. So we needed to make some type of accommodation in order to receive bids for the project.
Okay. Well, we got six minutes. If you think and want you to do it, be, otherwise I'd be comfortable if you did it as part of the superintendent's report. I leave it to you.
You can be...
I'm very brief. I just wanted the board to realize that right now, we're in the process of reviewing the handbook, student handbook. So we had our first meeting with the administration, who was part of reviewing all the pieces of it. Attorney Gornal will be here next, at the next committee of the whole in February to give you some ideas. You had received the actual handbook from, um, Mrs. Jones, she had given it to you. If you need another copy to review and you wanted to review anything or wanted any specific areas to be looked at, please let us know. You can let me know or, or Attorney Gornal. And, uh, we will give a, a more of a presentation of where we're going at and looking at in that student handbook. Thank you.
That was very brief. Any questions on that?
Mr. President?
Mr. Titus?
So I just wanna clarify, um, my, my fear, one of the fears that I hold is if we don't comply, since this is in the financial improvement plan to some degree, that we are, again, putting at risk, um, the board losing all governing power and ability, uh, at which point the policy will be eliminated anyway, because this is in the financial improvement plan. So I think that we as a board have to keep that in mind too, as we're, as we're going into the, to the next meeting and we take a vote on this, that we have pushed back against the state, um, a few... the state a few times. And we have found ourselves in a position where we, where we did almost lose the governing ability and the power over this Board. And that when we push back on this financial plan that has been approved, what we are all putting at risk when we do that. And so though I may not agree fundamentally with some of the things that are on here, this again is not about me, this is about the oath that we all took. And I wanna, I'm trying to weigh that and process all of that with, with everything that I heard tonight, just so that we're making sure that when we, when we take this vote, that we're also not jeopardizing what ability we may have to advocate on behalf of our students and the teachers in a, in a future position.
Okay, we've only got four minutes to wait till the beginning of the next meeting. Is there anything else anyone wants to say? And you wanna stand up for four minutes or do you wanna just keep going with the comments and the questions? All right. Committee of the whole meeting is over.